It is, and sixth graders at two local schools are camping on Palomar Mountain this week. For sixty years, it's been a tradition for San Diego School District's sixth graders to come to Camp Palomar. This video was provided by the school district. Student campers spent four days and three nights learning about nature, the mountains, and how to get along with other people.
As part of today's observances, Mr. Obama called for a national day of service in honor of Dr. King. Volunteers throughout San Diego County took to the streets in response and took pledges to keep the spirit going on a year-round basis. We have a snapshot from our gene covers.
And here's the background. Congress designated the King of Holiday as a national day of volunteer service back in 1994. Since then, it's mustered hundreds of thousands of Americans from all walks of life to give back to their communities in countless ways. Well, here's one we counted in our midst today.
My daughter saw me looking at a flyer last night about this and wanted to come out. And so, here we are. How important is this? Um, as important as...
So, we have...
Delegation, I speak very, very... Introduce, and the ladies take it.
Okay.
After all, they're the ones, they're gonna have to carry it.
How you doing?
Hey, Colonel, how are you?
Oh, good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. We're gonna take public comment around the budgeting, and the board is gonna reconvene in closed session to continue our bargaining discussions. You have about two minutes to speak. So, we'll start out with the blue sheet. George Lewis, followed by Monica Ball, followed by Denise Lynn, followed by Mary Stigman. Hello? I'll try that again. George Lewis, followed by Monica Ball, followed by Denise Lynn, followed by Marty Stigman, followed by Margaret Triger, followed by Ann Marie Haney, followed by John Flood, followed by Deborah Taylor, followed by Linda Parks. Are any of those people in the audience? Oh, please, you got two minutes each, come to the podium.
In any particular order, or...
You can go ahead, I've called your name a couple of times, so let's just go ahead and...
Terrific. My name is Marjorie Traeger. And my address is 4647 Lissanne Street, San Diego, 92117. School Board members, Dr. Greer, who's not here, and colleagues, I'm here today to address the board's decision on Saturday to take the Arts Block money away from the school sites that have not yet spent them. I ask you to please reconsider your vote and reopen talks about the Arts Block funds. March is National Arts and Education Month. Let's work to prove that we believe the arts are important in a well-rounded education. The paperwork you were presented with at the board meeting on Saturday suggested that there would be no impact by sweeping these funds from the school sites. That's far from the truth. There will be significant impact on programs, staff, and most importantly, students who need the arts to connect to their education. In order to receive these funds, each school had to create an arts plan that detailed how they intended to spend these dollars. They were promised that this money was earmarked for their arts programs, and that they could be responsible and research the best way to get value for their dollar. Now, those schools that played by the rules are being punished. Arts educations at those sites are being severely impacted, and the programs that have been planned have to be canceled. When kids participate in the arts, they aren't just learning how to put on a play, draw a pretty picture, or bounce to the music. They are learning team-building, problem-solving, character education, and a myriad of other things. Those at high school are actually learning a trade. The impact will be felt most of all by the students. I've heard the phrase, "It's important to keep these kids in schools and off the streets," and I agree with that wholeheartedly, but please take a moment to think about what keeps kids in schools. Often, the arts provide that hook. The inspiration the arts offer these students translates to attendance, ADA, graduation rates. Surely, you can see the impact that sweeping these funds away from the schools will take on our student population. That's an impact of 133,000, give or take a few. Please reconsider your vote on this issue and make an effort to right this wrong. Thank you.
Denise Lynn, 44515 Temprano Court, San Diego. I'm here to speak today in response to the school board meeting on Saturday I attended. When I came here from Los Angeles in 2000, I came here to build arts programs in dance and theater here at San Diego Unified, which I saw was quite lacking. The Arts Block Grant has brought artists to our district that have left positions with arts organizations in our district to come and train our teachers and deliver arts education that we normally wouldn't have not have had. Our goal was to train the classroom teacher to use the arts content and strategies to sustain arts instruction in their schools and by integrating it into their literacy, math, science, and social studies curriculum. We use those dollars for that training and for that teaching and for those arts instruction. On Saturday, I heard that every administrator was personally seen and willingly agreed to give up their funding. I want to know why. Four administrators called me last Thursday and Friday in a panic, saying, "What am I gonna do when my funds are taken away?" Why are they sitting there? I believe that because the school board shifted principals around so much in the last two years, all of that sort of fell through the cracks, and that many sites just could not catch up with that whole plan. And they're just now starting to catch up. So, the next time I go into a third-grade classroom and I see kids sitting crisscross applesauce, learning robust vocabulary, exaggerate, boast, and brag, and they're not getting it, I'm gonna wonder how sad it is that those kids in first grade, if they would've had dance and theater, wouldn't know what that meant. They would know what that felt like, they would know how to express that, and they would understand those concepts. All they'd have to learn now to do is spell it in third grade. So, please, consider your teaching artists, consider the risk of possibly having legal retribution, consider the sustaining of arts funding, consider the fact that in the long run, this is gonna save the school board money if we shift the responsibility to the classroom teacher to deliver arts instruction instead of having to pay for a specialist. Of course, that's what we would really like. In the long run, it's gonna save our district money. So, I hope you will consider your vote on the arts funding. Thank you very much.
I'm Marty Stigman, Visual Art Resource Teacher for the district in the Visual and Performing Arts Department. My address is 7707 Mission Gorge, Apartment 84, San Diego. Since all of you have offices in this building, I want you just for a second, think back to the days before, February 28th, like February 27th and before. I don't want you to think about what your hallway looked like up on the second floor. It was pretty empty, pretty boring, kind of desolate, and certainly visually depressing. But on February 28th, I myself, along with several art teachers from this district, began a transformation of that hallway. We began to hang 750 wonderful pieces of visual art created by students in this district from kindergarten through 12th grade. And the kind of thing that I hear in the hallway at that time are people coming out saying, "Yeah, this is my favorite time of year. I can't wait until all the artwork goes up." And at that point, I love to stop and say, "Remember all the teachers out there who are making this happen, remember all the kids." But I want you to think about the numbers for a minute. There are 750-plus pieces of art out here in this hallway and upstairs, and there are 133,000 students in this district. It's pretty sad to think that that's the most I could get to be able to hang up in these hallways. To say for a second that this arts funding, these millions of dollars who are not gonna be used is just simply not true. In the last two days, I've gotten phone calls from numerous teachers, and if you want names and schools, I'll be happy to provide them for you, of teachers who over months, and in some cases, years, have actually tried to access the funds, put orders into their principals or into their financial folks at their school sites. And the paperwork's, it's on the table, it doesn't get done, it doesn't happen. Ultimately, what I want you to remember is that on April 15th, as all that work comes down and you have a desolate hallway again, that's what's happening when you take away this money from all 180 schools. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Linda Byrd Parker. I live at 2881 West Bainbridge Road, San Diego, California. Good afternoon, President Jackson, Board, Superintendent Greer. I first became aware of the power of the resource of the VAPA program when I was vice principal at Hancock School for several years. Principal Mitzi Moreno and I decided that we were going to look for a way to reach our fifth-grade kids in order to teach them some social skills and to have them be more self-confident and able to interact and express themselves in a better fashion. So, we decided to model our instruction after Mr. Benjamin's dance class. And she did the etiquette part, and I did the dance part. And we had some fun. And then, we fortunately were blessed by this angel in the name of Denise Lynn, who came along and saved us and made it even better. Our students in fifth grade, who were pretty rowdy, actually, this all started because we were concerned about that, ended up looking forward to Wednesdays, where they would come and learn manners, learn dance steps, interact in an appropriate social context with one another and with adults. And we noticed that they started coming to school, the girls would come to school dressed a little nicer, the boys would come to school with their shirts tucked in and their hair slicked down, and they'd always be there on Wednesdays, looking forward to this. It was a true gift. We ended up even having Rod Luck come out and film us for the morning news. It was a pretty exciting time, and the kids asked for it to continue, and asked for it the following year, and the fourth graders were just dying to be a part of this. We were just very, very fortunate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Board members, and Dr. Greer, thank you first for your service, you guys. You've got a really tough job right now, and we can appreciate that. My name is Monica Ball. I live at 1311 Plum Street in Point Loma, and I'm here representing downtown Kiwanis. I'm speaking on behalf of Elementary School Counseling. We've supported elementary school counseling for 30 years. Also, speaking on behalf of Kids at Heart Tutoring, it's a 20-year-old program of intercity tutoring. We host 10 to 12 sites a year. And through those two programs, I've got pretty good knowledge of the impact of elementary school counseling. And I know you have a proposal before you to increase that possibly, or at least stabilize the amount of counseling in the schools. We think that would be a great idea, both organizations. The two things that I will tell you, having graduated two kids through the Point Loma school system, is your new mission statement is great. The last three words, and what you're hoping for the kids to graduate with in their possession, the skills, motivation, curiosity, and resilience. I think the motivation, curiosity, and resilience are pretty much directly tied to their emotional health. So, that's something that I would hope that you guys would kind of consider. The skills, kind of hard to get in there unless they've got the emotional health to absorb them. And as an anecdotal, well, it's not very funny, story of one particular boy, he was one of my tutoring students through Kids at Heart. And Raynell had been moved, because his family moved, from Washington Elementary to Gompers. I got a call from his mom six years ago on a January morning, "Please come down, please come down." And I was already scheduled to see his math teacher that afternoon. So, she said, "No, there's been a shooting." There had been a shooting right outside their apartment door. It was the third shooting in three days in Choyes View. And Raynell was the single eyewitness. He had been hiding underneath the staircase, you guys. And the fact that he was alive was remarkable, but he wanted to go see his counselor at Washington Elementary. That's all he cared about. Thank you.
Thank you. On this blue list, I'll call your names again that were on the blue list, and if you're here, please come down front. Then I'll go to those who just submitted sheets. George Lewis, Ann Marie Haney, John Flood, Deborah Taylor. If you are here, please come down and speak, okay?
I saved these stickers. I think I've had them 40 years now. That's kind of sad when you think about it. We're still fighting the battle of understanding that the arts are basic to the human experience, and all we have to do is go back to our earliest record of human civilization and look at the cave drawings. And they drew before they spoke, and they drew pictures of things that they hit and made sounds, and they moved and danced. They dramatized their experiences, and people need these outlets, and you all know that. But I wanted to just respond to some of what has gone out to the community, and I was alarmed to see the budget survey that indicated that you should choose among these special programs, and there are two items on there I won't name, and then band. Band is core curriculum and one of many, many subjects within the music curriculum. And it's not marching band, it is concert band, and it is orchestra, and it's music theory, and we can go on and on. So, we need to get the language to be accurate with what goes out to the public. You can't choose a bullet for those three items that are combined. And then, the Visual and Performing Arts were called out for reductions. It doesn't say what that is. Is that the whole music program for the elementary schools? Is it secondary schools as well? So, we need some clarification when anything goes out that the public can access, and especially for the board's information. So, that's important, and we hope we can do well with that in the future. Finally, after the state said the arts are core curriculum, developed standards, our district was ahead of all that and did both of those ahead of the state. No Child Left Behind said the arts are core curriculum. We still end up with categorical funds that are being cut, and the only curriculum area on there is the arts. So, we don't know what's being considered to be lost in other subject areas, such as foreign language, et cetera. So, when you see that funds come, I understand the federal money is due in two days after the deadline for this budget. We want to be sure that the arts are at the top of the reinstatement list, that we have too much to lose. And thank you for what you're doing painfully.
Hola, buenas tardes, como están? Espero que muy bien. Yo soy Deborah Taylor. Tengo más de diez años dando clases en Jerobek Elementary. Ay, perdón, ustedes me entienden, ¿verdad? ¿Si me entienden? ¿Si? ¿Quién me entiende? ¿Me entienden? Uno. Ay, pero sí, ay, qué bueno. Oh, I better go into English, sorry. Sigo en inglés. Wouldn't it be great if each and every one of you understood what I was saying right now? I know, I would bet my bottom dollar, and I know that's what we're working with, is bottom pennies, if we all could understand Spanish, this is California. My mother had the foresight when I was a child to know that in the 50s, and she hired, you know, Luisa Vargas? She's a dear friend. Now, she was 12 years old, I was seven, my sister six, and my mother said, "We were learning Spanish." It became her mission. I have never stopped giving her gracias every day. I've become bicultural, bilingual, it's completely enriched my life. And I can't tell you how many times, if I had a nickel for every time, that people have said, "If only I had learned Spanish as a child." It is known, it has been proven, that the time to learn languages in the first, some people say, "Six years of life, ten years," and then there's something that switches off, and it becomes more and more difficult. Wouldn't you agree? All of you have had Spanish all through. High school, we missed the boat in California. Fless program is what we have at Jerobek that was brought in by Alan Burson 10 years ago to the day. I looked in my notes, March 10th is when I accepted the job to do this pilot program. It was funded then by grant monies. Then, after that, we weren't really sure where the money was coming from, we were trying to just kind of close our eyes and keep going. It's been 10 years, but now, of course, we're sure that we're slated to be axed. We're just asking, don't completely pull the plant, don't yank us completely, leave a skeletal crew, it's so hard to get this going on. Arizona, Arkansas, Louisiana, Montana, New Jersey, North Carolina, Oklahoma, and Wyoming all have Fless programs that are mandatory. What's the matter with California? We're in the dark ages with this idea of learning language for this global community we live in, and we're just begging that you find a way to spare a skeletal crew of Fless programs.
Thank you. Brenner Ray Schuman, Nicholas, I'm sorry. Brenner Ray, I'm not, sorry here, hi, okay. Nicholas Ravelis, Cynthia Shin, I think, Bob Dingman, Lynn Todd, okay, yes, sir.
I'm Nicholas Ravelis, the Geisel Director of Education and Outreach for San Diego Opera, 1203rd Avenue. I'm here to encourage you in the strongest possible way to reverse your decision to divert Arts Block grant funding. This is yet another example that school boards, not only in the state of California, but all over this country, still don't really get it, that the Visual and Performing Arts are fundamental to the development of the whole child, and that it's your responsibility to provide sequential, standards-based arts education in the classroom, something that's been mandated by the State Board of Education. In my 11 years as the Director of Education for San Diego Opera, I've seen an amazing transformation of the educational offerings of San Diego-based arts organizations such as mine. Because of the encouragement and challenge of the Visual and Performing Arts Office of the City Schools, art, drama, and music specialists, government entities, and foundations, we have collectively transformed our arts education offerings from simple exposure to the arts to true experiential, hands-on residencies solidly based in the California Visual and Performing Arts teaching standards. Our access to classrooms has been based on our ability to meet those standards in everything we do as arts educators. But the temptation is to think that because of that acknowledged improvement, arts organizations such as mine will be able to fill the gap left by the diversion of arts funding to balance the budget. It's unreasonable to think and irresponsible to expect that arts organizations such as mine, all of whom are facing unprecedented financial challenges in this difficult time, are going to fill that gap. Without Arts Block grant funding, our precious partnerships with the schools will wither and disappear. Please reconsider and realign your priorities. Arts education is essential, substantive, and mandatory. Please restore.
Sidney Shin, 4356 West Point Loma Boulevard in San Diego. My older son graduated from Point Loma High, went on to USC, always did very well in school, had a lot of different interests that kept him busy, helped him to succeed. My younger sons had challenges with chronic ears infections, chronic sinus infections, glasses we got in first grade, hasn't been as easy of a road, but he's playing in band. Reading is not his favorite thing to do, he's reading music. It's a way for him to succeed, it's a way for him to feel good about himself. The arts and whether the kids, no matter where it might be that they succeed, they need to feel they can succeed. If they can't do it in the classroom, in math and English, maybe they can feel good about a picture, maybe they can feel good about a song they can play on an instrument they've learned. To me, it's all about teaching kids that they can succeed, however you attack it. But the arts and music bring a dimension to education that is so important, because not all kids can do it in the classroom with a book. It's too hard, it's very challenging. So, I encourage you to restore the funding for the music, for the art. These kids need to feel good about themselves, and help them feel good about themselves and give them a way to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Reeves Shookman. I'm a parent of poor children who went through the San Diego schools. I believe the arts are the essential building blocks of good living. They help to make peaceful and prosperous communities and the nation, and they're essential to every child's education, they're not anything less. And they are essential to build these very goals, skills, motivation, curiosity, and resilience, so the children can share their lives together and lead and participate in the society of tomorrow. These are troubling times. We must not undermine the arts and teachers at this time of crisis and despair, because you may add to the hopelessness and fear, the pain and frustration families are feeling, the damage and harm that may occur in the home. The safety and well-being of our children is in jeopardy right now. You have to fight to do all you can to protect and nurture each child and keep schools a haven for the sacred tasks of learning and sharing, to prepare the children for a brighter future. They must be protected now. Please keep the arts in the schools.
Bob Dingman, followed by Lynn Todd, followed by Shannon Smith, followed by Gloria Tran, followed by Marjorie Lopez.
First of all, it's wonderful to be backed up by such fantastic parents as I have with me today. Superintendent Greer, distinguished members of the Board of Trustees, San Diego Unified School District, I am Bob Dingman. I reside at 10292 Aviary Drive, Scripps Ranch. We particularly thank you for the opportunity to present to you some of our suggestions for the solutions that you face before you in our reduced budget. We have prepared some additional material, which we hope will assist you in making equitable distribution of these very scarce resources, and will take care of most of the problems that we have in our school district. I will be followed by the chairperson of our schools committee, Lynn Todd, followed by Shannon Smith and Gloria Tran. Thank you ever so much.
Dear Superintendent Greer, distinguished members of the San Diego Unified School District Board of Trustees, I am Lynn Todd, and my address is on file. We are here to speak on behalf of all six Scripps Ranch public schools, but I'd also like to point out that a lot of the front two couple roads are also concerned parents from Scripps Ranch that are here to support our viewpoints. We want to raise awareness of the fact that the current method of allocating funds to each school is not equitable. Given the dire economic position that the district faces, we fully understand that the significant drastic cuts need to be made, and the board must face some very difficult choices. But in making your decisions, please keep in mind that all schools need to be treated fairly and be provided with what is necessary to get the job done, the job of providing a rigorous, high-quality education for all students with the necessary staff, technology, and instructional supplies to do so. We have had dedicated parents spend late nights analyzing the budget data from last school year... presupuestarios del año pasado, que provienen de la propia página web del distrito, y han confirmado un hecho startling. Todas las escuelas públicas de Scripps Ranch reciben menos financiamiento por persona cuando comparado con otras escuelas de igual nivel en nuestro distrito. Por favor, referan los documentos que han recibido. En el gráfico de escuela media es el primero que tienen, y entendemos que nuestras escuelas no son eligible para recibir financiamiento de título uno. Sin embargo, por favor, noten que incluso cuando toman el financiamiento de título uno, Thurgood Marshall Middle sigue siendo el menos ranked. La escuela secundaria también está ranked en los cinco últimos. Por favor, corregan esta inequidad en el financiamiento y traten todas las escuelas justamente cuando se trata de asignar el financiamiento básico que cada escuela obtiene. También me gustaría introducir a Shauna Smith, que representa a nuestras organizaciones de padres.
Soy Shauna Smith y mi dirección está en archivo. He servido en la boarda ejecutiva de las organizaciones de padres en todos los niveles de nuestras escuelas de Scripps Ranch. Nuestros padres están comprometidos con nuestras escuelas de comunidad y no quieren ir a otros lugares. Pero podría sorprenderlos a conocer que solo 10% de nuestros padres donan en la escuela secundaria. 13% de los padres donan en el nivel de escuela media, y 45% en promedio donan en el nivel primario. Durante los últimos años, nuestras organizaciones de padres han tenido que suplantar, reemplazar los déficits en el financiamiento, no suplementar, agregar a las bases proporcionadas por el distrito. Este año solo cuatro veces nuestra escuela secundaria ha tenido que cambiar a la fundación para solicitar más fondos para suministros instruccionales. Nuestra escuela media ha solicitado 20,000 dólares para pagar por suministros instruccionales. No es la responsabilidad de nuestras organizaciones de padres proporcionar fundamentos. Estamos preocupados que mientras nuestras familias aprendan del desequilibrio en nuestro financiamiento por persona, nuestras organizaciones de padres recibirán menos apoyo financiero. Estamos dispuestos a hacer nuestro parte en estos tiempos económicos difíciles, pero necesitamos su seguridad de que nuestras escuelas sean financiadas igualmente. Gracias.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Gloria Tran. Mi dirección está en archivo y vivo en Scripps Ranch. Soy una longtime voluntaria de la comunidad que ha estado involucrada en varias organizaciones de Scripps Ranch y ha estado involucrada con las escuelas durante muchos años. Tradicionalmente, nuestra Asociación Civic de Scripps Ranch ha proporcionado apoyo financiero a todas las seis escuelas públicas de Scripps Ranch. El año pasado, la SRA proporcionó 30,000 dólares en financiamiento. Este año, debido a la crisis económica afectando a todas nuestras comunidades, solo pueden contribuir 6,000. Eso es 1,000 por escuela. Estamos preocupados porque nuestras seis escuelas caen regularmente en la parte baja de las asignaciones por persona, que el distrito tiene una falsa percepción de que nuestra comunidad y nuestros padres proporcionarán los recursos para los faltantes fundamentos. También hay una falsa percepción de que Scripps Ranch es visto como una comunidad afluente. Sin embargo, como todas las demás comunidades de San Diego, Scripps Ranch ha sido golpeada fuertemente por la desempleo. Sé que tengo varias familias en nuestra escuela que han sido despidas y que ya no tienen ningún financiamiento entrando. Solo porque podemos ser una comunidad involucrada y darnos nuestro tiempo, no significa que podemos darnos nuestro dinero mucho más. Para resumir, nuestro objetivo hoy fue raisedar la conciencia del hecho de que el método actual de asignar fondos a cada escuela no es equitativo y absolutamente necesita ser revisado. Les agradezco su tiempo.
Hola, mi nombre es Marjorie Kaim López. Vivo en 4930 Mansfield Street en 92116 Normal Heights. Y estoy aquí como padre, no como educadora profesional, de dos niños en Valencia Park Academic Center for Drama and Dance. Específicamente en esa escuela, estamos pidiendo que reconsideren el financiamiento de artes. En nuestro caso particular, estábamos tratando de ser responsables de ese dinero. Teníamos un cambio de administración con el principal. Estaban siendo responsables en revisar ese plan aún y todo. Y sentimos que estamos siendo penalizados por tomar nuestro tiempo y obtener las citas correctas y verdaderamente decidir qué sería la mejor manera de gastar ese dinero. Así que realmente queremos que reconsideren eso. En términos de educación y artes, veo cada día cómo estos niños quieren venir a la escuela porque están motivados, porque el drama y la danza se integran en el currículo de carrera, integrados en eso, y están emocionados por venir a la escuela. Sin eso, especialmente en esa escuela, no sé qué pasaría. Gracias.
Gracias. Robert Bogner, Paul Girard, Sally Stockton, Wendy Maples, Susan Izou, y Marian Shirey.
Hola, gracias por esta oportunidad de hablar hoy. Mi nombre es Robert Downer. Soy el director de orquesta y de choir de Sara High School. Este es mi segundo año, y primero me gustaría decir que es un honor finalmente conocerte, Dr. Greer. Tuve la oportunidad de hablar el año pasado en el concierto de orquesta distrital de honor para hablar con su director interno, William Koba, y me dijo que firmemente planeaba impartir a usted sus sentimientos sobre la importancia de los artes, y espero que sí. Estoy aquí hoy para hablar con usted específicamente sobre, bueno, primero sobre números. Y creo que, bueno, posiblemente necesiten empezar a obtener su información de mejores fuentes, porque estoy seguro de que todos en esta sala estarán de acuerdo conmigo de que cualquiera que te dijera que tomar millones de dólares fuera del programa de artes no tendría ningún impacto anticipado, no tienen idea de lo que están hablando. Necesitan despedirlos y encontrar nuevas personas. En segundo lugar, en segundo lugar, no se trata solo de los estudiantes y los profesores que están en riesgo de perder sus programas y perder sus trabajos. Se trata del futuro y la capacidad de usted para continuar a atrar los mejores y los más brillantes para enseñar a sus estudiantes y para enseñar a sus hijos y a los hijos y a los padres que están en esta sala. Gradué hace dos años de San Diego State University cumulata con honras, con un título en educación musical. Dentro de dos semanas de graduación, fui contratado por este distrito para venir a ayudar a reparar un programa musical abandonado en Sara High School. Desde entonces, he duplicado el tamaño del choir. He enviado durante dos años consecutivos a siete miembros del San Diego Distrito Honor Orchestra, uno de los que este año fue el principal violista. He revitalizado el programa de apreciación musical, y continuamos haciéndolo a través del futuro, espero, si el dinero sigue ahí, adopción de libros de texto. Te estoy diciendo que si quieres buenos maestros, mejor tienes buenos programas, lo que significa que mejor nos das el dinero que necesitamos.
Soy Paul Girard. Vivo en Del Cerro. Hablé con usted el sábado sobre los programas que la Sociedad de Harmonia de la Barba apoya en esta condición y estamos tratando de atraer a más chicos al choir. Si no hay choir, no tendremos ningún trabajo que hacer. Me gustaría que ustedes sepan que cuando voy a lugares como Paua Unified School District y veo el nivel de rendimiento de esos programas de arte, me he quedado sorprendido. Y ustedes saben, han oído la correlación con los resultados en otros currículos debido a los programas de arte, y creo que Paua es un ejemplo de eso. Así que por favor, mimen lo que hacen. Estoy un poco preocupado por que las cuestiones presupuestarias de los fondos de arte se pongan en impacto el programa a largo plazo. Han estado aprovechando ese dinero. Hay una ventaja de tres a cuatro a uno. Estás hablando de dólares duros. Hay muchos dólares duros involucrados. Además de las tres o cuatro veces de aprovecho que hacen directamente, también hay el aprovecho en los otros programas debido al impacto de los artes en la lectura, escribir y aritmética. Cuando veo la sección roja del presupuesto para el año próximo, me preocupo de que la VAPA esté en riesgo también. Con el corte del financiamiento de bloque este año, estás enviando un mensaje de que estás después del año próximo. El corte del presupuesto de este año también nos está llevando al borde de una colina porque ese dinero fue intencionado para cruzar la frontera fiscal. Por favor, no hagan eso. Déjame señalar una cosa más sobre su declaración de misión. Creo que las palabras "su elección" deben ser capitalizadas. Estás quitando la elección a estos niños.
Hola, soy Sally Stockton, 7979 Caminito Dia, 92122. Recibí un credencial en teatro de drama del estado de California antes de que se subsumiera el programa inglés. Maestiqué durante muchos años en el norte de California, totalmente drama todo el tiempo, excepto por un par de años cuando también maestiqué inglés. Ahora soy actriz y director y diseñador de iluminación para el condado, bueno, lugares en el condado, teatros, escuelas. Trabajo como instructor de iluminación en tres escuelas diferentes, Hoover, Scripps Ranch y Madison. Hay dos estudiantes aquí hoy de Madison. Lo que me gustaría que hagan, por supuesto, es devolver el dinero de los fondos de arte a las escuelas de la VAPA, a las que se le ha recortado. Han planeado cuidadosamente cómo gastar eso, investigando las mejores maneras de hacerlo. Cuando era, tengo que decirles, cuando era una maestra joven, fue tan increíble para mí lo mucho que el teatro conecta con las ciencias, con la matemática, con las estudios sociales. Para dejarles con un poco de anécdota, cuando empecé a maestrar, teníamos un salón de propósito múltiple para hacer los actos y hicimos los musicals en el gimnasio. Y tenía que encender las luces y dirigir los actos, ayudar con los costumbres, hacer los costumbres, en realidad. Pero tenía un niño que era como lo que solíamos llamar un niño de puerta. Estaba fumando y saliendo del campus, ese tipo de niño. Pero estaba en la clase de teatro y me estaba ayudando a encender las luces, y de repente se volteó y dijo: "Oh, eso es lo que es geometría". Gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Wendy Maples, 4120 Mississippi Street, San Diego, 92104. Muchas gracias por permitirme hablar con usted hoy. Actualmente, soy una artista de enseñanza con el departamento de la VAPA. Maestro de teatro. También soy la representante estatal de California del estado de América para la Alianza Americana por el Teatro y la Educación, donde actualmente celebramos el Día del Teatro en nuestras escuelas. Ironicamente. Soy una artista de enseñanza para los niveles de grado K a doce, realmente. Pero durante los últimos años he estado enfocándome en enseñar en las aulas de clase de educación K a 2, donde he trabajado con maestros que están magicamente enseñando ciencia a través del teatro, hablando de la cambiación de las épocas. Son confiantes en la narración con pantomima y tablo. He visto a estudiantes que son niños de ELD escribir escritos en inglés de tres páginas y los entregué a mí. He visto a los estudiantes aparecer todos los jueves cuando tienen mi clase. He visto un aumento de la confianza. He visto a los estudiantes superar impedimentos de expresión. He visto milagros suceder en un aula de teatro. En los niveles superiores, los estudiantes de la escuela secundaria con las que he trabajado han ido a recibir becas completas a universidades de Ivy League y muchos de nuestros escuelas de UC, tal como un estudiante con el que he trabajado durante dos años en la escuela secundaria de Hoover pasó a recibir una vuelta completa a Brown University y está actualmente en Rhode Island. Soy un resultado directo de la educación de artes tempranas. Compro, dormir y respirar teatro. Trabajo con niños todos los días que comen, duermen y respiran teatro. Los artes no son expendibles. Son una parte necesaria y vital de la educación de cada niño. Muchas gracias.
Superintendente Greer y miembros de la boarda, soy Susan Izou, la principal de Sequoia, y tengo que decir primero que debería estar en la escuela con mis personas de función nocturna, pero muchos padres, mi personal, no pudieron unirse hoy, así que estoy aquí para proporcionar algunas declaraciones sobre Sequoia. Como dije, función nocturna. Primero, me gustaría recordar a todos que es tan crucial mirar cómo vas a pagar función nocturna. Mis cuatro o cinco personas muy dedicadas a función nocturna no han sido pagadas desde en enero, y siguen trabajando todos los días porque son una grupo dedicada. Saben que los niños necesitan ser supervisados, y continúan trabajando allí hoy mientras estoy aquí. Así que el segundo punto de información se trata de la dedicación en que el personal y padres son muy dedicados en Sequoia. Le exijo que consideren muy cuidadosamente todas tus decisiones sobre la cierre de las escuelas. Todavía estamos tratando de tener Sequoia abierto. Siento que eso está en el mejor interés de los niños. Y tengo que decirles que mientras los padres están buscando de mí el uso del dinero de Prop S para rediseñar las escuelas, no sé, no tengo toda la información para compartir con ellos, información adecuada. Así que espero que ustedes tengan una apertura de los padres de la comunidad para que estén disponibles para hablar con ellos, darles información, ganar más confianza y dejar que sepan que eres un cuerpo trabajador para ellos. Gracias.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marian Shirey. Soy la directora ejecutiva fundadora de Classics for Kids. En los últimos dos años, mi organización ha proporcionado a 1,000 maestros con la VAPA estandar base en desarrollo profesional que están vinculados a la literatura y otros temas clave. Ha proporcionado a más de 50,000 estudiantes la oportunidad de escuchar una orquesta profesional, ver bailarines y actores en un escenario profesional y aprender comportamiento apropiado y etiquetteo de teatro. Por favor, unen a nosotros el 18 de marzo y 19 de marzo en el Bellboa Theater y vea por ti mismo el impacto en estos niños, que son principalmente los primeros grados, ya que somos el socio de segundo grado de su departamento de artes visuales y de actuación. Classics for Kids ayuda a los niños a soñar con lo que pueden ser cuando tomen su lugar en la sociedad y en el trabajo. Pero no podemos proporcionar esos servicios solo. San Diego Unified debe trabajar con nosotros y los otros no beneficios que están proporcionando programas de arte educativos. Juntos podemos aprovechar todos nuestros recursos para hacer posible los mejores programas para nuestros jóvenes. Le exijo que reconsideren su decisión y tomar los restantes fondos de arte de la VAPA para equilibrar el presupuesto. Los tiempos son difíciles para todos. Necesitamos trabajar juntos para encontrar una manera de entregar lecciones de arte a todos los niños de San Diego. Estamos poniendo el groundwork que puede llevar a una generación de ciudadanos culturales. No dejes de nuestros niños por debajo. Gracias.
Frances Vieira.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Frances Vieira, y hoy estoy aquí en nombre de Spreakles Bilingual Magnet Elementary School de la PTA. Asociación de padres e enseñantes tuvo una reunión de comunidad, creo, el otro día, y querían asegurarse de que sus visiones fueran oídas. No pueden estar aquí hoy. Lo siento por eso, pero sabían que iba, así que voy a distribuir lo que me dieron para darles a ustedes. Y, por supuesto, se trata del programa Bilingual Magnet, y verdaderamente no quieren que se impacte. Por favor, lean la información. Los padres no pueden estar aquí. Gracias.
Gracias. La boarda va a reconveniar para una sesión cerrada para continuar nuestra discusión de presupuesto. Gracias por su tiempo y sus comentarios. Gracias. Thank you.